Good morning, I'd like to call for the Order of July 7th, 2015, City of Statesboro City Council Meeting. I would like to ask Councilman Gary Lewis to lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
That's great. We asked you to take that proceeding. We ask you best to open this seat this morning. Somebody can wake up asking for their loved one protection around them, asking for God. We also thank you Father for allowing us to see a date we've never seen before in our life. And all the best we can ask to use name. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item 3, which is recognition of the Finance Department for receiving a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year ending June 30th, 2014. Mr. Chair.
Thank you Mayor. I want to give a couple of facts because I think it's important to understand how difficult this can be to give to all of you here for an actual award. Now, this is the CAFR, and it stands for Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. I've got four brief things. This is the 11th straight year the city has received this award. It's very impressive. We are one of 1,424 cities, counties, authorities, and school systems in the United States and Canada to receive the award. We're one of 141 cities, counties, authorities, and school systems in Georgia to receive the award. And we're one of 32 cities, counties, authorities, and school systems in Georgia to receive both the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is the CAFR, and the Distinguished Budget Award. Although maybe Cindy might want to say a couple of things about the specifics.
Just a little bit of brief history. The GFOA established the CAFR Award Program in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles to prepare comprehensive annual financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure, and then to recognize individual governments that succeed in achieving that goal. Also, the reports are submitted to the CAFR program or reviewed by selected members of GFOA professional staff and the GFOA Special Review Committee, which comprises individuals with expertise in public sector financial reporting and includes financial statement preparers.
Single weighs, I don't know, about 100 pounds. Seriously. Congratulations on all your hard work and your staff. Thank you, congratulations. Thank you very much. Don't look at me. Thank you. Don't look at me. Give me a hand, give me a second. Alcohol? Thank you. She, thanks. It is what it is. Thanks, sir. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item 5, which is our consent agenda. I will ask council to please review, excuse me, please review Agenda Item 5, and then ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make the motion to approve the ascended, the ascended agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion? Vague, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item 6 is the first reading and public hearing of Ordinance 2016-08 and ordinance amending Chapter 66, which is our solid waste ordinance of the State for Code Of Ordinances. Do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor, please state by saying, excuse me, do I have any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, public hearing is open. I'll ask Jason Lawrence to please lead us in this item.
Yes ma'am. During the budget process this year, we had several meetings with council members regarding our budgets, our rates, and our stormwater program. And through that conversation, some points were made about credits available to heavily low-income citizens. So, we investigated that and looked at our Robert challenges that each of us in the department has to look over our rates and see if we can come up with a credit for such and put it into one of the utilities. And so, solid waste sanitation was a natural fit for that. From that, staff looked through what other cities are doing for heavily low-income credits. And we've adopted some regulations that was on City of Savannah and City Fayetteville, what they're doing. And we feel pretty good about what we've got for our ordinance for heavily low-income. And it's modeled, truly modeled, very closely to how City of Savannah's structure. And don't forget about it, Alvin's looked at it, he's comfortable with that. And looking at the ordinance, Alvin also looked at our enforcement provisions, made some adjustments and some reworking of those statutes. And we looked through the ordinance some more and found some other areas and building materials and definitions that need to be cleaned up. So, we pulled all that together for a more comprehensive ordinance provision. Those are the highlights.
So, through this ordinance provision, there would be about $3.99 credit books that apply to it.
That's what we're proposing.
Okay. And that's relatively similar to stormwater utility, right?
It is.
But this is doing the solid waste.
Yes ma'am. Same attention. Yeah, we're, the fund is stable, and we were, we're not proposing any increases in our rates for solid isolation, sanitation. And we felt comfortable enough that we could introduce this heavily low-income credit to sanitation. I think maybe we can get it for the public.
Is there any capital in that at all, Jason, or is it open in this?
Not at this time.
Okay. And there's going to be a process put in place once this is passed that would help people to apply for that?
We will, yes ma'am. We'll have the ordinance states that you'll have to be 65 or older, you'll have to meet a low-income threshold that will, just like City of Savannah does, contract a third-party nonprofit organization. And we'll probably look at the same organization that City of Savannah uses, which is Concerned Services. And so, they'll reveal all paperwork so the staff is not getting into the public's personal areas, allowing a third-party organization to do that, which our guys agreements with the state and different agencies of the federal government to do that. And then, once that's, once they've applied and everything has been approved, and it will go into effect immediately after that for the next film cycle, it will be valid for one year. And each year, those applicants that are interested will have to reapply for that. And that's exactly how it's decided, that's right.
And when would this go into effect? When would they be able to apply?
Immediately after securing an approval.
Okay.
We'll have all the steps, we're still working on that part and all the details together, but we'll pull that together pretty quick. Mayor, council.
Do I have any questions?
What's, how many, how many are we expecting? It seems like we're doing a lot of big work for $3.99. And if, I can use Ms. Vinnie as an example because she picks on us, so if we're, if Ms. Vinnie walked in and said, "I want this credit out," unless Alvin and Sue and everybody says, "We have to go through this check on this," I mean, it's either an age thing, say, "Hey, we're okay." Is legally do we have to go through some stuff? I just think, it seems to be going through a lot of steps, $3.99 a month, and then they gotta redo it a year.
Right. And is it possible we may be doing that every two years to keep that work out?
Yeah.
Alvin?
Yeah, and I don't know if the process is on, if there are regulations in place, if it's a year or two, it's a possibility. Looking at that.
Federally, can, are we allowed to give someone a discount based on age?
We can, the reason, and clearly, correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason we're doing it on sewer, or solid waste, and not the stormwater, is because the stormwater, you can't, you can't give those kind of credits on stormwater. But there are some federal rulings, I guess, that say you can offer those kinds of things for solid waste.
It's not understanding.
Yeah, well, that option's still, also.
Right. I'm just.
I mean, if I can look into the question, when you say it's spread age-based credit, is it about 1,000?
No, no, we weren't going to do age-based, it's going to be needs-based over a certain age.
But it's needs-based, age from age.
What's an age threshold, ma'am?
Once you hit the threshold.
Right, but then it still has to be needs-based.
And if it's a needs-based analysis, you're going to need a third party to make the determination that's why we did it. Household needs, federal, follow the guidelines. And I think the reason Jason recommended, we don't want to get into advocates back to terms with all of that stuff.
And is there, I'm sorry, you said it's a nonprofit, but there's obviously still a cost for us.
Yes.
Is that, do we know, I apologize, I didn't read the whole word, I apologize. I know the rest of the already, the higher the solid waste, it doesn't have a limitation, right? Well, what's, I'm just still thinking, I mean, $3.99, unless I'm wrong, that's about 48 bucks a year.
Yeah, Savannah's obviously a larger community.
What's it going to cost us to save on 48 dollars a year? What's it going to cost us, if it's a $25 application fee and a $15 fee, next thing you know, we save 8 bucks.
Yeah, I believe City of Savannah has no application fee, but they contract with Concerned Services. And some of the details I saw upfront, that Marcos told me about, was that their initial payment to the Concerned Services is, I think it's $8,000, and then it's like $4 application process. Now, obviously, we're completely different in City of Savannah, we're not that large, it's not that much, not so much paperwork and process. So, I would say we'd be a lot less than that, than that threshold. They are, have reached out to Concerned Services, they are supportive of us looking at this, but State for looking at such credit. If you're interested in partnering with us, we're, we're.
Well, then, to answer your question, maybe it would be better to go to a two or three year than your only thought. I mean, honestly, most people have, you know, at that age, their income is not going to swing from one year to another.
Sure, Miss Sue will attest, if that's legit, and we can do that, then that'll buy me sales at a lot of cost.
But, I mean, we're not doing this for the City of Statesboro, big lender, literally. We're doing this to try to help those folks that are impacted, that are below the poverty level with a stormwater utility. So, if it costs us a little bit of money to offset something, you know, and I think Councilman Boyer was the one that made the point, $48 may not be a lot to some people, but it is a lot to others. And so, this was pretty much driven by Councilman Boyer's concern about folks in his district that $48 can be impacted. And so, we looked, I think, for creative ways to allow that impact to be reduced as much as possible for those folks that $48 truly isn't worth being impacted for. And so, I don't think there's any perfect way to do that, and it may cost us a little bit of money to do that, but if it serves those in our district who truly cannot afford it, then I trust, Jason, that you will give us the best deal possible.
I'm just, I'm just looking at if, if their 65, not population, was 1,000, and it cost us $2,000 to do it, $5,000 to do it, it may be easier to go, hey, it's the exact same amount of money if everyone was 65 or 66 or something. I don't know, I'm saying we'd have to do it. I don't know the numbers off.
No, I don't think, I think, you know, if you're going to give a credit, then they need to come apply for credit.
True, true.
I mean, if it's that impactful to you, then here's an opportunity for you to fill out a piece of paper, go turn it into some books, and for two years, you may have an amendment on your bill. I mean, there's got to be some, you know, need and responsibility there, so just a blanket, everybody over a certain age.
And again, I contend that if you're looking coming over 65, chances are, that's not going to change, so making them come every year is probably a little repetitive.
Three, three years.
Not definitely opposite.
Three years, even five years.
Yeah, well, Alvin and I'll be in there, we'll see what we can find out there.
There's no reason how the program costs more than that.
And I think, I think if you're going to, I would, I would be a little hesitant to go more than two years, let's see what the true impact is. Let's look and see what the participation is, what the impact is, allow over a couple of years so we can see what happens to, three years, and.
Sure.
Because we don't know, we may have enough participation.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, I gave you. But I feel that the funds is the same.
Concerned Services is through processes, the heat credits too, don't they?
It's not understanding.
Like choosing, yeah, so, it's already in the process of doing this, so.
That's right.
A lot of the people they already work with, they probably are getting qualified for this kind of thing.
That's right.
So, yeah, I'd have to lower paperwork as much as, ensuring as much as possible. But thank you for doing it.
Do I have anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this that's here today? This is a public hearing. Anybody to speak against? Okay, does council have any other questions, or anything they'd like to ask, or ask for a motion to close the hearing? Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing regarding Ordinance 2016-08? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item 7, consideration of motion to award contract to purchase a Caterpillar 938M wheel loader to Yancee Catpillar in the amount of $223,156,000, just right.
Thank you. I used to not need a reason.
Yeah, and they're done now.
This is a little bit different than you. We're recommending purchase off the state authority contract for the Caterpillar 938M. It'll be replacing the 2001 model, 1928 G, currently in use at the transfer station land building. We would ask as part of this, if you approve the purchase, to surplus the old one, surplus it, for all regulars, probably go through those process. We, I said, this is the state of Georgia, contracts aren't being bid out by the state, we per ordinance can utilize that. The, so I guess that's our recommendation, that we approve the Yancee Caterpillar purchase, $223,156,000. I would add that this is the only heavy equipment company of this nature within Bullard County, so they're local as well. And if there were an abnormal bidding comp situation, then we'd get the local presence as well. So, on those two issues, we recommend purchase of the Yancee Caterpillar.
Do I have any questions here?
Can I grab it?
Sure. Purchasing says sure, you're giving it the department in the century yet, after you injured, more than 100.
And we took you for a safety policy.
Speaker of the insurance.
Okay, do I have a question to ask, Gary? Okay, do I have a motion to award contract to purchase Caterpillar 938M wheel loader to Yancee Caterpillar in the amount of $223,156,000?
Does it move?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Agenda Item 8, consideration of motion to award contract to purchase a Greodol from Tractor and Equipment at the NJPA contract amount of $359,922,000.
This, we're recommending purchase off the National Joint Powers Alliance contract, which we came a member of several months ago. It's a groupie of governmental entities, and it increases the buying power, and so this contract is available to us. This piece of equipment, Greodol, it was approved before a stormwater utility, it cleans out right away ditches. It also is almost a sole source in that it operates on a telescoping boom, it doesn't reach over like most excavators, it reaches out and under. It's really the only heavy piece of equipment that has this type of function as well. Again, we're recommending the purchase from the NJPA contract in the amount of $359,922, Greodol, from Tractor and Equipment. They're the reasonable representative.
Is that basically sole source there?
It could be. I mean, absolutely. We're buying it off a contract, but I could be standing here before you saying it's a sole source as well. It's, there is no other telescoping function, piece of equipment, that does this type of job. Most excavators reach up and over, and it's hard to get under power lines and utilities, and this works well, not only in rural, but within the city environment.
You just determined this is going to give us the effect. It's going to be effective, it's going to be quicker, it's going to give us the end product, so we hopefully don't have to go back and talk to them, and just pull, repull and rest. This is just a neat piece of equipment that a lot of people do have the time to utilize and just, or get in and just run circles around the other pieces of equipment that we've gotten the product with.
And I will add that several attachments can be added, so that it's not just a excavating device.
In our equipment.
Yeah. Many versions, including.
Heard your gadgets, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Good. Yeah. And it sounds simplified, but that's a lot of. That's one of my top five complaints.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you dug up my yard, you know what, they're looking already, I remember.
Sorry.
I would like to add too, another feature is, you can drive this equipment to the site, it's road legal, you don't have to load it on a trailer, it doesn't tear up the roads and tracks. Storms or emergencies, you can drive it to the location and start working, you don't have to have a truck and a team to load it up, so it's very versatile, I like that.
Okay, do I have a motion to award contract to purchase Greodol from Tractor and Equipment at the NJPA contract amount of $359,922?
Does it move?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Not appropriate.
Thank you. All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Yeah, I wonder what's the best for racing all the.
We want to race the, we want to race the two. The two we just been on, and the one around the circle, Phil wants to drive it.
We're making a charity.
Yeah. Okay, Agenda Item 9. Consideration of motion to purchase a use-of-force training simulator from Meggitt Training Systems Inc. in the amount of $77,792,000.
Morning, Mayor. Morning, Council. Numerous months ago, some of the state was challenged by Director Turner to find a way to incorporate better use-of-force training into the agency. This was before Ferguson, before Baltimore. Some of these issues that have come from those incidents, it's centered around use-of-force training. We previously had outside agencies come in to perform this type of training with a firearm simulator. It would cost approximately $50 per officer, you pay the officer overtime, move back and forth, et cetera. A lot of those agencies up around the Atlanta area, and are not doing that anymore due to budget cuts themselves. We did a look at the possibility of sending all of our officers to Savannah to use the one, the training center. However, next problem would be overtime, fuel costs, et cetera. We started exploring the use-of-force training simulator through Meggitt, and several other vendors, Meggitt came out being the top-of-the-line training simulator. This purchase will allow us not only to do judgmental use of deadly force, train, shoot, don't shoot, less lethal options, low light, cover and concealment, and other training options. It also includes training with your firearm, your pistols, which is mainly what we had seen before. This one includes rifle, Taser, and OC, which is something that I have never personally trained on before myself, with a simulator. This item, if approved, we've talked with the sheriff's office in G S U, they do support this project, they would actually have trainers come in and go through this also to assist in training. Our goal is to have a trainer for each shift at the police department complete the training for the simulator, so that the simulator can be used while officers are on duty, reducing the overtime cost for this training. This is a GSA contract item, contract numbers GS02F, GR414D. Would include the simulator itself, Meggitt's folks actually coming down to do the install of the simulator, and conduct the training for the instructors that will actually facilitate the training, our folks. There is a yearly maintenance cost attached to this, $3,550. We've asked a few other agencies about offsetting that cost, and they have agreed to look at that past this. We will also offer this training to agencies outside of Bullard County, but that would be the cost base to recuperate into our man-hours, and also to help offset the cost of this There's a lengthy write-up of Lieutenant Lordy that are in your packets, and if you have any questions about simulator, we'll land it prior.
Oh, it's in the packet, yes?
I was in the council packet.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I've got the description of all of them, I thought you didn't like them.
Oh, yeah, they're just, yeah, letterhead that he had written up on, I'm sorry.
That's good.
To give you a little more, make a visual effect to it. It's a high-definition screen, the scenario is projected on there, there are 350-plus scenarios in there, and it also has the ability for us to film scenarios, to add to it, so you can take a local incident, film that, add it to the scenario. The weapons are not tethered, which is something that many other systems actually have a tethered weapon, there's a cord running to it. So, you're using the same weapon, the same field, the same recoil that you would be in live fire. It can also be used for marshmanship training, if you're having someone who's having marshmanship issues that can be trained in the simulator before going out to the range.
What about, I mean, you mentioned, Rob, that you want to have a trainer that's there, I guess, perpetual? Somebody that's always there that can be conducting training? I'm just wondering from the standpoint of, does that go put a stress on your staff?
No, ma'am. What we'll be doing is actually, one of the officers from that working shift, you would have somebody from each shift certified as a trainer. And one of the ways to do this is, while they're working, be able to come in, and we hope to do this at least twice a year, if not quarterly. For they, their supervisor can pick, oh, yeah, this is a downtime, a great thing to do, to be on a Sunday night when they're working, not as busy. We would be taking two officers off the street to do that training at no cost, where we would, we're sending everyone, you wind up with overtime and fuel issues. We do not see it as a burden, we would also have our Lieutenant Lord train Lieutenant, and some of the trainers from the outside agencies that get certified in this to work with each other to make sure that the cost is written down.
Okay. I'm just, I was just kind of curious, because you talked about other agencies coming in, and, you know, we've got our trainers, we don't need to put in another position to do that if there's so much demand, or?
No, ma'am. We would, we would manage that demand to a point, we don't want to become a training facility, this is more for our folks, but we do want to have a inventive way of setting that yearly cost, so that does not become a budgeted item, but that annual service cost is.
How much is that?
$3,500.
Okay.
Can we say the orders are on $50 for officers to do some training? Is this equivalent to that?
This is better than that.
Okay.
The former systems that I personally trained on, it was your pistol, and this will actually have your rifle, the Taser, and the OC to go through all the use-of-force options that are available to the officer, other than just the firearm.
Did I ever send any certification at all for going through this? Was there anything, or just the fact they got X number of hours? Did I ever say any certification at all for going through this? Was there anything or just the fact they get X number of hours on the simulator?
Uh, they actually get post-training hours. That's why each person would have to be a post-certified instructor that we already have on staff. Um, and they receive post-training credits to go towards their annual requirements.
Um, since here Glock seventeen, we don't use Glock seventeen.
We do not, um.
I said, I mean, seventeen's nine mil.
That, that is correct. The Glock seventeen is the only option that you, just like the C, they offer one C. Fits in the holster, same fit field, um, everything else with the weapon, it functions the same way. It will not replace your live fire training. This is for your use of force training only. The previous systems that we have dealt with also, it was typically a Glock seventeen, um, that was used. It is a, an M four rifle. I can't tell you the manufacturer of that rifle. However, most M fours all function the same as even functionality with the Glock.
Did you mention to me earlier, we were talking also that you, for people that are requalifying, that they can utilize this?
If not for live fire qualification, um, but when we have an officer that may not be shooting to the, uh, abilities he needs to, a trainer can take him in to the simulator. You can film the different, the targets out of the range at different distances and use that, uh, to go in and diagnose his problems without expending ammunition and also them a much more controlled firepower. And that could be done anytime, uh, while they're on duty. We have a firearms instructor on almost every shift and that would negate them having to go to the range, expend ammo, and typically come in on off-duty time.
I was thinking that, just the fact that, I think we all agree, the more realistic we can put our officers in with the tragic events here around the country, the more practice the better, the better would be, the fact that we're able to utilize C's funds versus.
That's right. It is being funded through, uh, the C's fund account and that is an allowable expense. Where are you gonna put it? Uh, we have a quarter master room off, uh, it's a back of the police department in that, uh, rear garage area. Um, we will take half of that area and convince them and they have to put up a wall and put some carpet down in there and, uh, Meggitt will come in and saw it. So it'll be a air-conditioned controlled environment, which will not only be a pretty equipment, but, um, it's a little easier to get hooked and trained, it's not raining.
Yeah, I just want to say Brian.
And again, we're gonna offer this to other agencies in the region.
Uh, in the, within the county at no cost, what their trainers going through. If other outside of, uh, Water County do want to participate, there would be a fee to help offset that cost.
Okay, I have the motion to purchase a use of force training simulator from Meggitt Training Systems Inc. in the amount of seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Zoom. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Consideration of a motion to authorize the merit to execute on the act of the city and state for a Georgia Department of Transportation fault signal permanent application from South Main Street at Parish Drive.
Mayor, I'm gonna start before I turn over to Brad, but just to bring y'all back up to speed and ask Brad to show you what we're actually looking to do along with she got. This is where we have the, so many pedestrian crossings on Trail One South. Really have the two places, but the prevalent place is really between Tillman Road and, uh, Rucker Lane. And of course, we recognize it for a long time. We studied it in-house. We've had consultants study it on two different occasions. We presented a lot of different ideas, uh, to Georgia Department of Transportation. Of course, there's certain standards that you have to meet and there's a lot of different ways you can do this. I believe we have been at this. We challenged each other in-house. We've done everything to fussy each other and figure out how to do this and do it properly and safely. It needs to be done. You don't, the way that it is now, at least the pedestrian crossing the street is somewhat in a defensive mode. It's their, it's their responsibility to cross, but once you've done something else and you, if you've introduced a crosswalk or some element, some measure to make it safer, you obviously don't want it to be safe, but you're still on that pedestrian thing, not what they're doing. A good example is, um, the three locations on the Deer Drive that we've added pedestrian crossings. That's a three lane. But still, it's, we, we added those and those are functioning very well. We studied them, went around and around, figured out what method we wanted to use and it's functioning very well. With this five lane, really, this five lane plus that one spot, there's actually a decel lane, so there's some width that you deal with. You've got a lot of intersections. In this case, we're talking here, we're talking about putting that, where the drives on both sides don't line up. There's a lot of criteria that you have to be a certain distance from the driveway. It's gotta be a certain distance from intersections. Everybody's familiar with this location. You've got a vertical element that gives you a challenge of just not perfect place to put this. The perfect way to, for the first, best method to do it, what we come up with, Brandon, Jason, and I can then do the part in their studies. Working with G I to try to get this, I'm ready. This is what we think has been working. This is what G I will accept as well. I just wanted to set the stage for that to let you know that we've been looking at this for a long time and it just has not been an easy, come up with an easy solution that you call it.
Right. Like Robert had said, uh, over the last few years, the city's had a lot of concerns about the safety of pedestrians crossing, uh, South Main Street in the area of George Southern. Uh, this particular location that we're looking at today is, uh, at Parish Drive, which is where George Southern's police station is located. If you all remember that, uh, there's also on the opposite side of the road from George Southern, there is, uh, the Legacy Apartments, which used to be called the Woodlands. And as you see on the map, um, let's see. This is the hotel where, it's a Best Western now. I think it used to be called Davidsonian. And, sorry, the Legacy Apartments sits back down this road right here. And this is George Southern's police station right here. So I guess everybody's kind of familiar with where we're talking now. The main issue we have here obviously is, uh, students from the apartment complex, uh, crossing in this area to go to class. There's actually some pedestrians, I think, generated by the shopping center, some parked in this area over here and go across. But the vast majority of students crossing are coming from the apartment complex. Obviously, South Main Street is a, is a five-lane highway in this area. We, we've done some pretty extensive traffic studies and found that during the spring and fall semesters at George Southern, from about the hours of ten AM to three PM, there's approximately fifty pedestrians per hour crossing in this area. So what you end up with during the course of the day is literally hundreds of students crossing. Uh, South Main in this area has a traffic volume of seventeen thousand vehicles per day. So the, the issue that this causes is there's very few gaps in traffic in which the pedestrians can walk all the way across the five-lane highway. So typically what, what is, uh, commonly happening is, uh, the pedestrian will walk to the center turn lane to get halfway across and then wait for another gap to finish the crossing. And, uh, Cameron, if you can, okay, you got it. Here's a picture of what you typically have out there. If any of you have driven through there, you've probably seen this. But, um, there's pedestrians standing in the middle in between some cars and, uh, obviously not an ideal, uh, situation. To top it all off, you know, the speed of the traffic is higher than what we feel comfortable with around pedestrians. Uh, back in two thousand twelve, the city worked with G I to lower the speed limit from forty-five miles an hour to thirty-five miles an hour. Unfortunately, that hasn't resulted in, in slowing a good bit of the traffic down. We've recently done, uh, collected some data and found that, uh, for the southbound traffic, which is coming from downtown heading towards the bypass, the eighty-fifth percentile speed is forty-nine miles per hour, which, what that statistic tells you is that traffic is generally comfortable going about forty-nine miles per hour in this area. Uh, that's a pretty significant number because once you get above thirty-five miles an hour, uh, any kind of accident that involves a pedestrian and a vehicle tends to be a little bit more serious. During the last three years, we've had two accidents that involved pedestrians in this location. One was kind of what this picture is showing here. There was a pedestrian standing in the center turn lane and a car was trying to get in the center turn lane to make a turn and actually hit the pedestrian. Fortunately, the, uh, speed of the car get, uh, the car was slowing down, so it wasn't as bad as it could have been. Uh, there were some injuries, but, uh, fortunately no fatalities or anything like that. We also had a bicycle that was going across to the same location about three years ago and, uh, the car hit the bicycle, caused the person to be hospitalized. Uh, fortunately, no, no, uh, fatality or anything like that. So during the last couple of years, the city, uh, hired a consultant engineering firm called Water Lieutenant Associates to help us study the issue and recommend some solutions. The consultant looked at pretty much every solution they could come up with. We looked at, uh, a traditional tractor signal, which, uh, like Robert and me just said earlier, uh, the, the location does not meet the, uh, G I's tractor signal warrants. So that, that kind of ruled that out. You have to have an extremely high number of pedestrians to get a tractor signal warranted, which I think is around two hundred per hour, which we didn't quite have. We also looked at some other types of flashing beacons, uh, caution lights. We didn't feel like any of those solutions would really help in terms of changing the behavior of the driver and getting the drivers to yield to the pedestrians. So the recommended solution from the consultant was to install a device. It's called a HAWK signal. And what HAWK, HAWK is an acronym, which stands for High Intensity Activated Crosswalk. And, uh, I'm gonna show a video here in just a second. It's like a one-minute video. It just kind of shows you how a HAWK signal works and what it looks like. But, uh, typically they're used in, uh, areas where tractor signal warrants are not met, but you still have a high number of pedestrians crossing a busy roadway. We'll go ahead and show the video real quick right now.
The pedestrian hybrid beacon, also known as the HAWK signal, normally shows dark indications to vehicular traffic and a solid hand indication signifying don't walk to pedestrians. Once the pedestrian pushes the crosswalk button, the HAWK wakes up by displaying flashing yellow to vehicular traffic. It then goes to solid yellow, which, similar to a normal traffic signal, means the signal is about to turn red. The pedestrian continues to see the don't walk signal. After the HAWK turns solid red, pedestrian signal changes to walk. Using caution, the pedestrian may now legally begin crossing. After the walk phase, a flashing don't walk phase accompanied by a numerical countdown will begin. Pedestrians may finish crossing if they had already started, but they may not start from the sidewalk. Vehicular traffic sees flashing red. Each vehicle must stop, but then may proceed if safe to do so without endangering pedestrians or other traffic. At this point, the HAWK signal reverts back to its default mode of being dark for vehicular traffic and displaying don't walk to pedestrians. Should another pedestrian push the button soon after the previous walk phase, there will be a predetermined time to allow vehicular traffic to clear before the sequence starts again.
We just wanted to show you that video since a lot of people don't typically know what the HAWK signal is, but, uh, they've been around for about fifteen years and they're used, uh, all over the country now. And, uh, G I has, has also reviewed the traffic study that our consultant did. They agree with the, uh, the conclusion of the study. G I's actually installed some HAWK signals in other parts of the state. None in this particular area. There is one in Savannah, but, uh, we don't have, uh, that's the closest one this year. But again, G I was in agreement with the, uh, results of the traffic study. And they've actually indicated that they would be willing to install the HAWK signal with their funds. Uh, the only thing that the city would be responsible for is paying the, uh, monthly power bill for the signal, which is typical of any traffic signal that we have in town. If for some reason, uh, there was an issue with G I, though, they have given their, their final blessing on funding the, uh, installation. Uh, the city does have some slop, some supply of funds set aside for, uh, the traffic column, which we have identified this as a potential project to, uh, to fund, but I, I don't think we're gonna have to use those funds in periods of G I's, um, to fund the installation. Also, George Southern has agreed to connect a walkway to the location where the HAWK is to be, uh, constructed. We feel that's pretty important in, uh, channelizing the students to the signal instead of them walking around it to both sides. But we're also, uh, again, George Southern is, is giving us, uh, working on an agreement to give us some writing where they're gonna construct the walkway. Uh, so the item that's only is unit today is just executing a permitted application to G I. And that's just the first step in G I's approval of installing the signal. And again, it just obligates the city to the monthly electrical cost. If anybody has any questions.
Sure. Uh, we talked about this, Jason and I were there, we talked about this for a while, Russell and Dr. Keel. The idea to have some of them to be received on the other side was key. So you're saying there's a, a spot on the other side.
Right.
Looking at the map, looking at the proposed signal location, we're gonna have to be, or I don't know who, someone's gonna have to figure out a way to divert the traffic down to the crosswalk. And if the George Southern would say, and Pauline Kedef would say, you're gonna cross at the closest spot from where you're standing to the other side of the street. And I, I, I don't know how we, I don't know any picture.
I don't see people walking the length of the famous and then go across the crosswalk. I'm worried what they're doing.
Yeah, there's, there's no easy fix for that. Um, what we've seen to some extent, um, down at Rucker Lane, so the same property that they were trying to signal was installed, was that, um, once, once the, um, once the signal was installed and you had just, say, pedestrian crossing, um, people who were normally just jaywalking across the street and further down away from the intersection were now starting to come towards the intersection, cross, they were parked in the gas station parking lot. We recognize that as safer means cross. This is a tricky scenario here. I mean, it's a, there are tough geometric conditions out there on this location and there are only continuing to be pedestrians that don't use the crosswalk necessarily. But, um, we feel that, um, we've gotta do all we can do as a city to provide a safety in order for pedestrians to cross. And this is something pedestrians didn't do, I'd say.
Yeah, I was gonna, get the map pulled back up, but, uh,
That's where it's going, right there.
The crossing would be right about here. And what we found is that probably seventy-five percent of the pedestrians crossing are going in this direction. Uh, there's a few that are crossing, coming back this way, but the vast, the majority of them are going in this direction. Uh, Chuck Taylor is showing me his plans for the walkway and what it shows is down here at Forest Drive, they're gonna come up this way. There's some wetlands in this area, so they're gonna avoid the wetlands. But the trail would come right up in here, pretty close to where the signal is. So it's not exactly the shortest route in the direction they're going, but it is in the direction that most of the pedestrians are going, we feel. Kind of like Jason said, it's not, it's not a purpose scenario, but that's, that's G I's requirement is you have to put the actual signal a hundred feet from the nearest intersection road, which is Parish Drive. That's, that's why it's down here later. We feel at least with the trail being there, uh, that's gonna somewhat encourage them to use it, we're hoping. Not a purpose scenario. I can't tell you that everybody's gonna go to the signal instead of walking, taking a shortcut, but, uh, we're hoping that we get enough of them using it that it's gonna be beneficial.
Well, it'll slow it down anyway. You know, they'll definitely take the road for the forty-nine miles an hour, it's gonna suddenly slow us.
Yeah, and we, we've been talking, like Robert Frank, so we've been talking to G I and George Southern a lot on this. And, uh, we've even requested George Southern to consider closing Parish Drive so we could ship this further down. Um, that was a hot motion from George Southern, um, which, you know, it's right there, like Frank said earlier, it's right at their, their police station, their public safety center. So we understand the concern to get it out quickly, you know, from that location, um, and this, this is just the pedestrian area that I think told you not to.
Well, you have to assume, there's no reason to believe that that traffic count's not gonna continue to go up. As that traffic count continues to go up, there may be no option but to use a crosswalk to get across there.
Signage.
It's on business time, so.
Yeah, just signage by itself. We don't feel it's gonna do a whole lot. And just to add.
No, I'm saying in addition to it, just to put it out of pain. You're not crossing it this way, you're technically doing. You're not crossing it this way, you're technically doing it.
Right. We've done that on, on Chandler, on Hart. There's a lot of pedestrians across that area and they'll cross at various locations. So we've installed signs that, that fell on different sidewalks and other paths. And then George Southern has to redirect students back towards using the crosswalk. And we're doing all we can do to do it.
And, and what I would envision doing is, if GDOT approves it, we would reach out to the apartment complex and try to have some public outreach for a redraw. Them on the benefits of walking through the signal and trying to encourage them to use it. And by the way, we talked with George Southern and they do allow the residents of this particular apartment complex to buy parking passes, but it's, it's been that way for several years. But, you know, obviously, the students choose to save their money, I guess, because it is close enough, they can walk. So we don't feel like the problem is gonna go away anytime soon.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I ask for a motion? Okay, do I have a motion to authorize the mayor to execute on behalf of the city a Georgia Department of Transportation HAWK signal permit application for South Main Street at Parish Drive? Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Addendum 11 is presentation to acknowledge accomplishments of code compliance enforcement division regarding dilapidated structures. Since implementation, we need demolition permit application procedure by the Department of Planning and Development.
Yeah, I was gonna, right, right before Erica, just wanna make sure that we're getting in front of y'all enough to let you know that we're working in areas like the, either the removal or the renovation of buildings that are dilapidated structures in the city. And there was a question in one of the previous council meetings. And we've had this ready for a couple of months, but we had long council meetings, so we didn't put it on there. But I just want y'all to know that the code, code compliance and the planning and development department puts a lot of their effort and time into this very, I, I thought it would be good for them just to give a brief update on where we are and how many we fixed and remedied in the last year or so, whatever you wanna provide, Eric, but I thought this was...
Good morning.
Um, since 2012, when I first came to go to Florida, I kinda noticed a small issue with the way we were dealing with dilapidated structures. It seemed to be previous years where we might've had one or two houses where they'd be demolished. Usually, we would have to bring it forward from council and do a budget to tear them down through a process and plans. The estimated guess between each one of those structures is about eighty-five hundred dollars, hoping that it wasn't asbestos inside the house. So two houses a year was pretty much what we were looking at. Since 2012, the planning and development department... Since 2012, we came up with a demolition permits. This part of the building was a one-stop shop instead of multiple apartments. We worked with, along with the engineering department, where planning and development took over the one-stop shop where we began to control the building permits and demo permits. It made a lot more sense. It was a lot more customer-friendly to get done. The demolition permit application would be designed and new process, new process was applied in order to enforce application to meet state mall requirements and ensure the safety of community. That was all the goal, was safety and blightiness and property values, but safety is our main focus. Yeah. In 2012, when I first got here, in May, correction, May of 2014, we had approximately eighty-one houses inside the city of Statesboro that we investigated where we resumed at major issues. A lot, most of them were vacant, abandoned structures. They were breeding crime, they were bringing drug issues, lighting, property value. So during this step through the last two years of the one-stop shop, using demo permits, we've been able to come up, come up with approximately thirty-six houses that we were able to demo or remodel last year without causing one penny to the budget. This year, go ahead. These are just a couple of houses. In 2015, we were able to come up with thirty houses. We are starting to get to the point where some of these houses are state-owned houses and saving a lot more efforts, communication, cooperation with the family members to get demolished. And again, we tried to either get demolished or remodeled. Either way, that's our focus, is to create a more safer community for the environment. Every district has been involved in this process. Every district's had houses either remodeled or demoed that had been extremely light issues. Mr. Bolling, your district, between you and Mr. Lewis have been at the top of the scale as far as, I would say, evidence where you've been able to see how this is demolished.
There's a few over there. We have a few more, keep it up.
We, we've been still trying to work on that process, but again, we were asked to give you guys a summary of where we're at now. If you guys have any questions or concerns, we'd be happy to answer you guys' questions.
Yeah, just, just so you know, you know, when you tear down everything, whatever you're doing with these structures, from a, from an immediate impact, you know, it's mostly just affecting two or three people on that street. But, but I'm telling you that the word is getting out there and, and people really are, you know, but it's, it's, it's... This is retail cleaning up, you know, one at a time. There's no other way to do it. And, but people are appreciative, so you probably don't hear it as much as you need to, but people are, are starting to notice that they are appreciative.
And I would say being, having a friend that happened to be on this list of, or that's sixty-six properties, is a friend of mine. The way that it was worded, the way he short-worded it to this friend of mine, he does a very good job of, of encouraging that, my friend, to fix the property up. If you don't fix it up, this is what we gotta do. If you do, he just, he did a great job with that. And my friend appreciated it. And the property now looks better. Same, I believe. It was a method of, I guess, he has the sticks he needs, so he doesn't, you, and it was kinda cool. Well, my friend thought it was pretty cool.
Any more questions?
I have a house, yeah.
How many you got on tap for fiscal year 2016?
Um, currently, one. We just had one torn down yesterday. And I'm not counting buildings as, for example, old eBay store. That was not on my dilapidated list. I'm not taking credit for those. I'm taking credit for, it's gotta be in the census.
Do you have any other?
I have...
Do you have any commercial properties on your dilapidated list?
Yes, ma'am.
You did?
If you start small, always work it up to there.
I'm just...
Get some momentum.
Some in general area.
Some in the general area, yeah. So maybe, like, maybe you plan to have that effective conversation?
Some that we've already talked to and have realized that cooperation is not gonna be key thing. We're trying to get some more money saved up in budget because some of them, we're gonna have to do extensive payment, which is gonna be big money.
Okay.
For, for the time.
Couldn't resist.
Thank you, four second. Thank you. But it is worth pointing out that it's not just, I mean, it pays the usual expenses that nobody uses. Any structure that's causing one of the police department any concern at all, I think so, or it's an ice.
Public census. Okay, our agenda on twelve is consideration of a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract for professional services with Slavon Management Consultants, Slavon Management Consultants, to conduct an executive search for the city manager vacancy in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars. Mr. Ray.
I'm the mayor of council, Director of Government Resources, Jeffrey Ryan. As many already knew, Slavon Management also in many cities and different consultants. And Slavon Management was the professional services that we decided to go with to conduct the city manager search. Three of the things that we really looked at were, really, their local government experience, how expensive it is, if you see that in your pocket, that was provided to you. As well as location near Atlanta, a lot of consultants were, not in Georgia, which were, people, travel expenses and so forth. So, and then cost, obviously, we looked at how competitive the cost was. And as you can see in your packet, it is not to exceed twenty-two thousand. The fee for it is actually fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. The other eight thousand sixteen dollars is just for potential travel costs for candidates. What the consultant said, probably, really didn't come near that. But that was kinda just earmarked for the travel expenses. And the fourth, obviously, references to cities and counties and talking with a few of those. Slavon Management just kept coming up as a top candidate as a consultant. Just a little bit about them, their independent management consultant formed in nineteen ninety-eight incorporated in the state of Georgia. And they operate out of Atlanta, as I said. And Mr. Slavon is actually the, the main stockholder, has extensive experience as a government executive and has a, has a management consultant. They have affiliates in North Carolina, Ohio, Dallas, Connecticut, Florida, California, as well as Arizona. As you guys can see, if you look in your packet that I provided on page five, there's actually a timeline. If you look at that real quick, it kinda give you a picture of how this process will actually work. It's under section I, labeled improvement process timeline. And you'll see that the search process normally takes between sixty and ninety days to complete and typically follows a pattern that you can see below. You'll see number one, develop a search process, which is one to thirty days. Number two is the identify qualified candidates. That's also one to thirty days, potentially thirty to forty-five. And then number three is screening candidates. That's at the forty-five day mark. And generally, what happens in talking with the consultant, approximately twelve semi-finalists are actually submitted to you guys. And then it's broken down to about five candidates that they actually break in face-to-face with, with candidates. Number five, interview and evaluate prospective candidates, that's forty-five to sixty days. And then number six, we'll see submit a final report recommendations, that's forty-five to sixty. And then establish evaluation criteria, just, just general follow-up, which is sixty to ninety days. Do you have any questions?
What would you suggest to be the process to kind of establish a criteria of what council's looking for in the candidate, in the description for the candidate now? What would you suggest that process should be?
Um, well, I think initially, what I, what I, what I planned to do was actually reach out to you individually. And I'll prepare you, if this is approved, you know, the consultant will reach out to you as well to really make about three to five characteristics and attributes that you'd like to actually see in a city manager. And then kinda come to the general consensus of a list, a target list of what we are looking for as, as a governing body. So I think, I think that's definitely a prudent thing, you wanna know exactly what you're looking for before you build the list.
So they would reach out to you individually or...
They would, yes, that's correct.
And then come back at some point and say, this is a criteria that I personally was setting?
That is correct.
And that would be done in the first thirty days?
That is correct, yeah, probably.
And once that, I'm sorry, what then?
Probably the first two weeks.
Okay.
And talking about that.
Okay.
And when's, when's day one start?
Day one starts from, from talking with the consultant. Really, you guys gotta approve this and we'll get it signed. I think that's important to them, that the mayor signs it and executes it, and that's when they want it.
And we got like a two-year warranty on this?
That's correct, that's correct, that's correct, yeah, that is correct.
Full replacement, none of those pro, uh, prorated nonsense?
That's correct.
Okay.
So...
Hopefully, we don't have to go there, but...
Say, never know.
So how can we propose it?
Any other questions?
I'm just gonna get the battery, but...
Well, no, 'cause you don't get that full mail back on that battery.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's, no, this is a full replacement.
That's right, so... All right, does anybody have any other questions for Jeff on this particular aisle? Okay, do I have a motion?
You know, I do have one question. It says, say, that between the twelve finals and then the five finals candidates, will we have some input on going from twelve to five, or how, how does that...
That'll be up to you guys.
I get you, so even that process is...
At some point, I guess, they will come in like, I don't know, we could arrange it so if you're trying to decide, you know, narrow down your pool from twelve to five, they might come help in that process. Okay, I mean, I would assume, but... Okay. Do I have a motion to authorize the mayor to execute a contract for professional services with the Slavon Management Consultants to conduct the executive search for city manager vacancy in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars?
So...
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Addendum thirteen, consideration of a motion to approve resolution two thousand fifteen dash twenty-six, which is a resolution to approve adjustments to the classification and compensation plan to create the position of deputy city manager and authorize the mayor to negotiate compensation. I've asked Jeff, if y'all will refer in your packet to that, let's see, it's kinda near the back, it's about ten pages, fifteen pages on the back. There is a change in that resolution. It was a typo for lack of a term. And then I'm gonna ask Jeff, once I've addressed that, to kinda, to, to tell you how this is set up and what it actually means. That the city manager department is creating the position and classification of deputy city manager at the paper ad twenty-seven, not of twenty-six.
That's correct.
So why don't you share with everybody this particular resolution?
Sure, um, sure.
And what the entry level is of those type things?
Let me, let me start with the positions, just kinda give everybody, the job description is in the packet for each of you. I'm just kinda giving you a, a big picture of this position and how it works is, basically, this, this position will serve as a key staff person who works directly for and provides administrative and managerial support to the city manager. They'll provide overall direction to selected departments. These departments will be natural gas, engineering, water sewer, and planning and development, as well as working on special projects as well. So it'll be, it'll be an arm to the future city manager, managing those areas within the city of Statesboro. So it'll serve as somewhat of an operations, day-to-day operations manager of those positions. Any questions about the job description?
What other departments do not report to that? It seems there's only one on there that does not, or there's not, the one on there that's excluded is public safety. Why is it excluded?
I think the, the main thing was in discussions that you guys had remarks to it was in terms of it being a heavy load on that position and separating those, level of power in terms of departments, public safety, being under your deputy city manager, I mean, that would be more than or close to, to the city having to report to the deputy. Also, as well, thinking in terms of the strengths of your current deputy or potential deputy city manager in terms of engineering and planning and...
I understand that he's not taking his workload, he's reporting, getting reported done by the public safety director. That's the only division that we don't have reporting. Why would it not be...
Well, it's not the only division that's not reporting. Well, it's not the only division that's not reporting.
What else, what else does it include?
I got clients, human resources, information technology, all of them.
Well, I mean, I don't understand, why wouldn't everything be reported?
I think we looked at a lot of different setups, looked at a lot of different cities. And there were setups where you had assistant city manager that was over all of those divisions. We did find a setup where generally those cities would have, whoever the deputy is, they would find that those strengths are and align those departments with those strengths that they had with the city manager.
I don't know, does, it seems to me he's still the second in command, he just has a superior focus?
That is correct.
Good way to start it.
When you read the job description, I mean, it doesn't exclude special projects. So, for example, if the city manager wanted to assign a special project that had to do with the police department or anything like that, they can certainly do that with the deputy city manager, that latitude is in there. But in terms of scope, the deputy city manager would be over these particular departments.
I would say you may want to consider, I don't know if you guys talked, but you may want to consider throwing IT in there only because with Bryant expanding the city fiber network, you're talking about a lot of pipes in the ground. I mean, a lot of times they're going to run in similar ditches or next to, or, you know what I mean? So, that, with the amount of infrastructure that Bryant's putting in, he's starting to become, you know, he's got his own pipes. They got light running through without water, but still. Robert, maybe, I realize this is going to be your position, so maybe it's not appropriate for you to comment, but I just thought that IT is starting to move a little bit more like engineering, you know? He's digging a lot more.
It makes sense, we actually discussed that.
We did, we discussed that. I think originally when we talked about.
Smart people.
When we talked about it, the idea was he would be second in command and handle everything he has to work. After talking to the potential candidate, he expressed why that was more difficult. But I do think that, you know, that the new city manager can make that call and change all of his board and change, if you want to change. I don't feel that I'm being, I don't feel that I'm being backed into the decision because the candidate, I want the candidate more than I want the job title. And if this, if the guy that were, if that candidate is the one that wants it, this is how he wants to set it up, I'll just more flexible on what the job description was because I wanted that guy in the position. And maybe that's the wrong way to look at it, but I was looking at it from, we were creating a position for Robert Cheshire. And hey, if that's wrong, then that's wrong. But I, and so in talking to him, I was like, well, what is it that you see this position will do? And in two months, if we have this position and we're like, no, you're going to handle everything. I think that the one concern Travis has brought it up was a lot of the administration across the board would be handled by this new position. And Robert, if you want to, you can answer some of that now, when we talk about that. I think it's okay for him to say that, or you can offer your opinion about why that position, why the administration changed a little bit.
Right. It really came as, as we started looking at how the cities were set up. And I've recognized this need for the city for a long time, felt like it needed. And this last twelve months plus is really, really reemphasizing again, you know, the need that there's some areas that if somebody were taking that load off all day, free up, that's, that position would be a whole lot more effective. So, as we looked at, I used the GMA conference, for example, to talk to three other M A C managers just to see what their role was. And the ones that I talked to all had very specific, they're across the board, like you're saying, they're over everybody else, but they have some specific departments, you know, day in, day out, operations. That is their function, so that they know what their role is and the manager immediately knows what they primarily function, function with. They just take that load and it just gives it that formally, so there's not a question as to what it is. But as Jeff stated, and it says it in the job description, it can be whatever the city manager says ultimately. In this case, it just worked out better as the operation, and that's how we, another one we looked at was exactly like that. So, they have electricity, electrical system as well. And it just made it, just real clear as to who the role initially it is, but they can be set up however.
I'd see a problem if, say, the city manager gets sick and has to spend months in St. Joseph's Hospital. And the deputy city manager is not over finance department. I'd be, would that leave, you have to look all of a sudden when you have to learn some stuff that.
No, it's actually number one on the primary duties, is functioning as a city manager in the absence of the city manager.
Yeah, but I mean, the day that person is in the hospital, would you have to catch up session with the ones who aren't directly under you? Or with the ones you aren't directly over? If that makes sense?
Let me speak to that, I think due to the nature of the relationship of the city manager and deputy city manager, I'm sure Robert's in the loop of what's going on in the city or something like that. And that would be a healthy relationship to have.
I realize, I realize that, I guess I'm thinking about.
Well, there's certain.
Who's property is going? Who's in this, new city manager, new deputy?
To a certain extent, finance, public safety, H R, those are like standalone. I mean, the ones that you have here listed under the assistant city manager, those are all interrelated. Engineering has to work with water, who has to work with natural gas, who has to work with IT because all that stuff is in the ground and they're having to cross pipes and all that. So, I mean, that, these departments tend to work, you know, they're integrated a little bit more than. Police isn't really integrated with water sewer, you know, besides the fact that they have employees. You do have employees, right? Correct, but that's okay. But, so anyway, that's my, that's my, when I, when you guys were talking about this, that was my feeling is that, hey, the enterprise ones kind of all do the same thing, and they over, there's a lot of overlap. It's like a Venn diagram, there's a lot of overlap, and you're kind of sitting in the middle of that Venn diagram. Whereas police, finance, H R, they, they're, I mean, they certainly connect with each other organization, but not as directly.
I think y'all need to just take into consideration for a minute that the deputy city manager will be serving as the interim city manager for another four months. And during that period of time, while all of this looks great on paper, as you bring in candidates and you see a candidate that you really like, that candidate that you really like, my gut feeling is going to say, I hope you're okay if I change X. And hopefully, whoever you bring in or council decides on has a ton of experience and can say, while all of this, again, looks great on paper, we may want to consider doing it this way. And so, I think to sit here and say this is cast in stone, I don't see that it's cast in stone in any way. I think this is going to be a job description suggestion, a strong one, to the city manager that comes in, is that fair enough? And they can work out the nuances of how to do it, but for the next four months, Robert's still over everything. I mean, that really hasn't, isn't going to change how function that after the next several months.
If we have a candidate comes in and chases this two months, then maybe that's not working.
Well, and we just, I, I think we're moving into new territory, and I think it doesn't have to upset the apple cart per se. I mean, I think that, that we can still function like we've always functioned and the lines of management and all are going to be the way they've been the last year, and that's going to be that way for the next several months. But you got to start somewhere with the job description. And I guess, I sit there and I appreciate Robert's honesty and how he thinks it needs to run for us to be the most effective and efficient. And quite frankly, I will be honest with you, I have seen so much ineffectiveness and inefficiency in the last twelve months, that I'm glad to see that we're looking for a way to maximize the resources that we have. But again, I want to caution everybody just to, to, to think that, you know, over the next few months, as people come in, I don't see this job description that Robert has necessarily staying exactly like it is, and I hope you're okay with that. Because if, you know?
That's right.
The candidate comes in and says, look, I need it to be structured this way. I've been working in that particular model, and it's been successful for me, and it was successful for the city that I was in. I would certainly hope that you would be able to.
So, they're part of the job, goes with it, you just say that, whatever else.
And all of the things that's assigned, that's always a love to catch up.
And mayor, we had that, we had that conversation.
Some cities actually have two assistants.
No.
It's over.
And then after, somebody's overvoted, or something like that.
Uh, I'm not speaking for everybody else, I'm just speaking for Jay and Moore. That's because I'm being negative, at least in my opinion, but anyway.
Also as well, they'll see attached a resolution, and under section one, it says, I'll paraphrase, it's hereby further intended as follows, the city manager department is creating a position classification deputy city manager at pay grade twenty-seven, and obviously, job description is attached. We've got twenty-eight pay grades in our classification compensation system.
What does that come in at twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven, it starts at about eighty-one thousand. It's fairly comparable for deputy city manager. I didn't look at one or two comparable cities. And this would allow you the flexibility, because the next grade is, I think, is at about eighty-nine. I think that would cut out, you know, that eighty-one to eighty-eight flexibility in the case of that position being vacant in the future, that would probably a viable range for start somebody, depending on their skills and abilities and portion of their experience. So, that was kind of, I mean, the twenty-seven versus the twenty-one.
Four more questions? I know it's asking for approval by the city council to create the position, but employment of deputy city manager, would that also be a vote from city council?
That's correct.
That's correct.
So.
First you have to create the position.
And take them out, if there's somebody else, you know, nothing.
Oh, I see what you're saying, you're saying, well, in the future, will that position be an appointed position of city council?
Is it just like dislike city manager and Z Burt?
No, that, this position would actually be hired by the city manager. Being we don't have city manager, that's why.
But some, you know, flip side, it can be terminated by the city manager.
That's correct.
Yeah, with consultation with council, that's a little short, right?
Oh, yeah, but I mean, that's technically the one I would. It's not written in that we have a position that we are in fact, we're creating it, so that's a little bit of a different scenario.
So, if we're going to make a motion, and we do want to think about moving IT over, should that be in the motion?
I, I think you can just agree to have the job description.
I mean, I personally would like to see IT added. I think it fits, you know, I think it's going to fit more and more in the future moving forward.
Now, I would, I don't know, let me ask you this, Jeff.
Sure.
You interview people and you get somebody in here that says, this is the way I want it. I want this position to be Xed. At that point, that would just be a function between the city manager and the deputy city manager, correct? So, it would not necessarily come back up.
Not necessarily.
But obviously, we could communicate those changes to council.
That's correct.
Yeah. Any, oh, okay. Any further questions?
Phil, if you're going to add that, I would personally like for all departments to report it, on a micro level, on a macro level.
Well, I think when he functions as a city manager in absence of the city manager, I mean, I think he's technically the number two guy. This is just more of the day-to-day is, hey, this is his stuff. I mean, day-to-day, I would, I don't think the assistant city manager is going to be looking over the piece. I think that's going to be, or, or finance, or H R.
What is his day-to-day, I don't understand then how IT ties into what you're doing? I mean, planning, zoning, okay, water and gas, okay, but.
IT has a lot more, with Bryant's doing and running fiber around the city and trying to tie in with Georgia Southern, they're trying to run a fiber line down the Willa and Metel Trail, they're very involved with the city campus. So, I mean, it's tied into these special projects. You know, we thought about running fiber down the highway to three oh one. If IT had have been involved in that in the beginning, we might have said, hey, this might be a good idea. We already got the trench, let's go ahead and throw another pipe in the ground. But, you know, that, they weren't tied in as close, and so we missed that opportunity.
Wouldn't that be more special projects than it would be the day-to-day IT stuff, with software and?
I guess every water and sewer project, every extension is that it's a special project, is it not? I mean, when you, Kewon Road is a special project, three oh one's a special project, so I mean.
Yeah, I, I'll sit there, but they're going to work it out between themselves anyway, so.
Well, that's the motion I'm going to make, so. Go ahead, make it now, if you'd like.
What I'm looking at, let's see, I'm just looking at if that's even in the motion.
Well, I can just change it to say provides all overall direction to engineering department, water sewer department, natural gas department, planning department, and IT.
Phil, it's a job description that's going to be a little bit fluid. I mean, if you want to go ahead and add to the job description.
We're approving the job description, I'd like to see that.
No, we're approving the classification and compensation plan, that's what the resolution says. And creating a deputy city manager position. With job description attached, but, I mean, if you do that, okay, all right. I'll leave that up to council, they'll do that one. Thank you.
Well, I think that, I mean, I think that Jeff, it's clear that we're not all on the same page as the document that's provided has that person's job description. So, I think that needs to be something that we continue to look at. I don't think we're done, you know, John wrote something, we first got here, Travis brought up something, Phil's wrote something, and I thought, I thought of Robert. I would rather this position be, all five of us, mayor, including the six of us, feel like this is the position that we envisioned when we first started talking about this. And it seems currently this is not, not what we thought.
That's correct.
Either we need to come back around through some information through you and through Robert, or he's going to, which is the description needs to be changed for a flight of one more. And I don't think we have to delay in this resolution, I mean, this resolution is simply adjusting the classification compensation plan. I guess the next question is.
Would be attached, would be attached job description, right? You can appoint somebody to city manager and give a creative position. I mean, to create the position, it requires a description. So, when we approve this motion, we are creating a position with this particular job description.
Well, you could go, you could go the flip side, and this would be obviously wrong, would be wrong to, we can create anything except for not accepted. Which is, the position serves as a vice city manager, like a better term over everything. And then you would have to negotiate with the new city manager position as to where y'all felt you were most effective in serving that. I mean, I think that how that position created a job of creating it is not creating redundancy and inefficiency. However, hopefully, the city manager contact, you know, person that comes in here will realize that and will say, for us to be the most efficient team that we could possibly be, then this is what we need, how we would need to put it all together.
Mayor, couldn't he almost do that without even, he or she couldn't he do that without even really coming back? That would be the task that would be given to the city manager, city deputy from the city manager. He could say, you know what, I really enjoy snow and water, so I'm going to work with all form of water, and Robert, I need you to handle that, and that would be.
Well, I mean, hopefully, you would get somebody in here that you would look at the talents that you have and the talents that you're hiring, and you're not hiring. and the talents that you're hiring, and you're not hiring redundancy, and you're allowing for the maximization of the resources that you have, and they can make those decisions as to where we can, you go focus on this and I'll focus on that, so we're not both focusing on the same thing at the same time. I mean, that's your hope, that the candidate that you hire is gonna come without ability to separate up and do. So, in lieu of negotiating a job description, that probably is going to change based on who you hire. Would it be okay then to say that this position will be created where it oversees all departments? And then as the new city manager comes in, and part of the discussion that you have with that new city manager, they're gonna look at how things are set up and say, if you hire me, I'm going to want it set up this way. At that point, y'all have to make a decision, is that what you want to do, you know, is that who you wanna hire?
Change the primary function, function of the city manager in the absence of the city manager and functions as the second-in-command for the city? I mean, I think you can be over these groups as a primary function and also effectively be second.
How would you even delineate groups at that point? You could say overall department.
That's what I, I mean, instead of original certain things, spice. The job description come up from city manager. You said, yeah, answers everybody's type of question.
We can just establish something, move on. You okay with that, Robert? This is a position you're gonna be nominated for next, so I got no. All right, it's sitting here on the thing.
Are we changing the job description?
We'll change the job, job description to reflect the current duties that Robert had or the current duties of the job description, would that be fair? Okay. So do you wanna, how would you word that in the resolution, Jeff?
I mean, to.
Well, in that case, it's probably gonna need to be rewritten.
Yeah, and I can bring it back to you guys next time, I mean, if.
It's not an instinctive change.
Yeah, it's not. And also, let me say this, I mean, we talked about all this, I mean, and all right, and talked about it, that, you know, this is a new position, with every new position, you know, what's on this paper is gonna change more than likely. I mean, there's things that are gonna come up, there's things that are gonna evolve, there's things that, you know, evolve as the city grows, per se, even in the next few months, so we had that very specific conversation that this is, this is gonna change. I mean, this is just a starting place.
So we don't wanna, we do not wanna do a resolution to create this position, is that what you're saying?
I don't like, table until next time and let Jeff rewrite.
Okay. I will not ask for, I will not ask for a motion, but you want to table agenda item fourteen as well?
May, I'll move the table until next week.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, agenda fifteen, other business from city council, I've got one item, does anybody have anything else? And my only item is that we need to go ahead and say, today, we talked about this last time, for our final alcohol work session, before bringing the ordinance and final council. Do y'all have any preferences to the date?
I have no preference.
I'd like to try and do it between now and next session, will that work for everybody at some point?
It would work for me.
Sir?
It would work for me.
Okay. Yeah, that would be profitable if we could do that.
About Monday the thirteenth?
What time?
There's a dinner we've all been invited to from American Best Community.
Yeah.
That night, Sunday.
That's the sixth of August.
If we're gonna be in town, I was raised a house in, you know, it's gonna be a tough time, so.
You want to tie it for the, like, four o'clock on Monday, is that what?
You do it on that Monday at four. You do it anytime on Monday at four?
I'm in London, I'm in Savannah, all day until five. Yeah, London's late.
Okay, what about Tuesday? Let's just go down.
I'd go that morning.
I think morning would be good.
Tuesday morning.
What time you wanna do it? You wanna say that?
Tuesday morning on the twenty-first and then an evening council?
No, no, no.
The fourteenth, Tuesday.
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth.
Track it out here, or you will. What we're doing.
Okay, so do y'all wanna set it for, everybody agreeing Tuesday, July fourteenth again?
Prefer in the evenings or in the afternoon, but, I mean, especially considering most of the restaurant owners and things like that, it'll be more.
Why would they be more than one evening?
I don't know, I just don't.
Why would they be more than one evening?
I just don't.
So what do we say, nine AM? Nine AM?
That was it.
Okay.
Making a money doing this, I don't know if they have.
Tuesday at nine o'clock. July fourteenth. Okay, have that missing? All right, city manager comments, do you have anything? I'm sorry.
I know it says final alcohol work session. Hopefully, it'll be the final work, alcohol work session, but I won't vote on anything I might talk for you, but I would get all looked at.
Well, I mean.
Just listen, and, and I understand kids coming back, and I might have done before then, but I won't have, I won't have done right before they come back.
Well, we'll see for that.
That's what, that's what, that's what I'm saying, I'm shooting for, but just, you know.
We'll shoot for it, and just be up for it. Okay.
I'm sorry, I have a business with Jason, too. The Fletcher neighborhood is looking forward to a presentation from your department regarding store water. Their meeting is the fourth Tuesday of the month at six o'clock, so I don't know if you or somebody else would, would be willing to come out and just tell folks about it, but they would be appreciative.
Yeah, just let me know, we can coordinate.
Anything else, guys? Okay.
I've got just a few items, but I'll keep them brief. First, city clerks asked me to verify some alcohol applications. Now, three hundred and forty East Green is applying for a change in alcohol license under pending background investigation. Names are Larry, Brian Carter, and Lynn Wick Humphrey. Then the Hall is applying for a change in alcohol license under pending background investigation. Be the same names as previous. Then Applebee's is applying for a change in alcohol license or pending background investigation. Name, the name of Matthew Skinner. And then just a couple of other things, so a few other things. Renovation, y'all recall the renovation of the old police station? We took the bids, and bids were higher than our budget. Budget was three eighty-five. The bid, little bid came in at four twenty, council approved up to four hundred and twenty thousand. And I appreciate that, it allowed us the opportunity to go in and value engineer and see if we could bring those prices down, maybe remove some items that we feel like would be a detriment to the overall function of the building. And fortunately, we were able to do some things, and we got it down to three hundred and eighty-eight thousand and five hundred, so it's fairly over our budget, and that's what the contract amount we ended up being for. So that project, the notice to proceed, I think, was issued yesterday, so they'll get cranking on that. Savannah Avenue improvements bid Thursday, the ninth, so right, two days from now, so we had a good mandatory pre-bid. Appreciate everybody being there, and hopefully, we're gonna get some good bids on that. That's a much-needed project. Y'all will call it the last council meeting, we had two business owners and also representatives of the thing of the board of the DSDA that came and were, had some issues or some problems with downtown parking and people, with employees parking in the public parking spaces for longer than two or three hours at a time. Just, we haven't come, come up with a resolution yet, but I did ask your department to look at it. Brad, do you wanna just tell us where we're, where you're at?
Been communicating with Alan Mulder on this issue, and it appears we've identified that it's just a few, it's kind of an isolated issue, there's just a few individuals associated with one particular business on West Main that are parked in the parallel spaces on West Main in front of some of the other businesses all day. We've made contact with that particular business and the individuals involved, and we're trying to get them to work with us on parking somewhere else. Hadn't totally been resolved yet, but it's still in progress, I mean, we're working on it. It's not a widespread issue throughout the street, I guess is what I'm saying, so.
You could just keep reminding me about that, we'll update council periodically, hopefully, we can get that resolved.
Robert, I, I think Brad is probably one of the most polite people we've all ever encountered, and I think he's being very polite to say that it's isolated. I think that it's, I noted the other day, I did my own research down the government, and there are people that were at law offices that park five feet from their front door. I don't know why you do that, because I would assume one person paying three hundred dollars an hour, not walk as far, but that's your choice. But I, I think it's, I don't think it's as isolated. I think it is a very common practice, if you run a business within five hundred yards of this building, you park as close to your front door as possible. So I'm not, and I say that because if the opportunity comes up to support something like two-hour parking or an hour and a half parking or something, I, I am, I'm definitely, I'd like to see the extreme be brought up. And I don't know what that would be, I'm not saying meters, meter days, but I had to park, I went to a festival, like, went to the little downtown thing, I had to park, how long to park for that? I know the people that drive them. I'm like, why are y'all parking there? Maybe they don't have another parking, another spot to park. All right. One guy said, one guy said, I wanna show you something, went up to his car, his car was the closest car to this front business. But, so I think, that may need something for us to look at. What, what, what we can do.
I mean, App, I know it's not here, they've already sent out letters to most of the downtown boroughs, have they not?
Yes.
Should we do something a little more official from the city and say, hey, you know, we prefer not to go this direction? You know, we encourage you to, you know, park off the street, you're gonna park all day. And we'd rather not do something, but we will if we have to.
Right, from personal experience, there will be some people who will say, yes, I understand that. Some people who will take that to go around the track, and you park right in the park with their lives. And people, until they are forced to do, to not do so. And I know that from experience.
And they come and complain about the new two-hour law?
And some of it, unfortunately, is government pork. We must have five government agencies near us, some of them are there, and maybe there needs, there needs to be a rule if you have a sire, and you leave quickly, I get it, but I don't know, I mean, that needs to, needs to park five feet.
Downtown, you may say it was simple, but it did, you don't have to park in the park anyway, so why would it be a problem to park in the park? It's a city, I mean, you have to, five of them, you see them.
Well, the person that's complaining is the, the other merchants that are, that are needing foot traffic are complaining, saying, hey, man, I can't compete, because I can't get foot traffic, because someone has to park so far away from me, because the person that's parking closest to that business doesn't even, I mean, works down the street and around the corner, so.
Well, that parking area behind LA Water, that, that's lovely parking, that's private on back there.
That's LA Water.
That's probably, but the one with the corner is.
The city. Yeah, I moved that here.
And, and there's a real gray area of them, who owns the ones, I say gray, it's not really gray, it's understood gray, around the Jewish Lanix and down there, those are all, they're public parking, but they're not treated as, but they're treating as a, I have to park here, something like that, so I just think, I think a lot of it's gonna be looked at, is where you can park. And it could be, hey, just assign it, lose reserve for customers, move them down.
How much, how much property in LA Water, he on that whole block from behind over there, that's all the way down the wall and up? Am I right to say that? And, and, and that's his parking lot at the back, isn't it, right there? But what I'd really like to see, really, I mean, when you coming up West Main Street going east, all those cars parking in front of his place should be in the back, next to another lane, because you were gonna West Main go up, turn east, it narrows in when you get down there. If you hold it, if you take that lane out in front of him, then you got more space going east, I mean, the road just getting narrow, you get right in front of this bit.
Well, that's, that's the area I've been complaining about.
All that shit, you put the street what I'm saying.
Because they can't get in, can't get in that business, but I think, I think that same issue is being replicated on all four sides of the courthouse, all the way down this way.
If you try to get out of your car right there, I mean, somebody may come through there and hit you, because the city parking, then you got a lane in front of you, all that shit, you one lane of traffic going east, that just comes from a parking in the back, since he going all that down there, going to Waller Street. That's just an idea, I mean, thought. You're talking about your customers, so they're never parking this park, it's not like they're paying.
I, I don't think that section is LA Water so much as it is the federal employees. I think the west side is, that's, that's the bigger problem over there, I could be wrong. I think most of the LA Water's employees are parking in the back.
I'm not talking about the federal employees, it was a problem, I'm not talking about the West Main.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I'm talking West Main going east, you know, on that side, you know.
We'll take all that, I mean, that's just sound, but helpful, and we know it's gonna be a challenge, whatever we do. Thought we'd start at the one end and work our way up, but it looks like it's gonna be a bigger, a bigger issue. Most downtown, right, is a simple, so at least we all agree that there is parking, you just got, might have to walk, so we've got, we'll deal with that. Last, last item I've got has to do with the curbside recycling. And I told you on a couple of occasions that we've been having some dialogue with the county on where that's heading, and we tried to head off where we thought it might be heading, and that would be their, their abolition of the, of the whole program, or at least a suspension. Myself and Jason have had, could have been a dialogue back and forth with the county, and they provided us with a, with a summary of some things, I thought I'd read it just briefly to you, and then, but it does look like on September one, they're gonna suspend that, that program, primarily based on, the, really, it's, you know, this was, I wanna point fingers, and, but this, these are some facts that the county provided us with, and we felt like, those of A, or properly assess the full cost recovery for the program, there should include public education, effort, installation costs, typically the recycling facility costs, camp and overhead. Overly optimistic revenue projections generated in two thousand eight for recovery recyclable revenues, the annual fee of twenty dollars per customer, not covered costs to collection, quarters estimated revenue from single green recyclables, substantially subsidize the cost. Those of A, set up a program, a proper program, building into established proper program policies. And, you know, I'll disagree with any of that, they talked about some potential options. Permanent susp, it's really just two that I think they're looking to do, and that is to suspend the program itself, and take those resources and put those, more toward keep a beautiful program, whether they have it or we have it. We've had that conversation as to the fact that we did not utilize a lot of those funds this year. Could we use some of those funds to help with the program, you know, keep it sustainable, and I just didn't get a positive feeling, Jason, you can, you may be disagreeing on anything, but that they were, really wanted to pursue it much further. And then the other thing that they did offer was the potential of adding a additional convenience center inside the city limits, like the one that's on the west side of town, be a drop-off for recyclables. So they did agree to do that, so. We tried, didn't have a lot of success there, and, and there was a lot of reasons for it, not only just what I read there, but they had some personal issues that people leaving or people being ill, and, or they were to run it properly, and it just got out of whack, and it's gonna be hard to get it back, and I'm convinced that they, they wanna get it back.
They don't seem very committed to it.
Right.
Let's just be blunt, you know. They're, they're ready to, they're ready to throw them down, shut it down.
Now, they are gonna continue to pick up the cardboard at the commercial and the stuff at schools, so that's, I thought that was a positive out of it, because I'm told that that was, they're very successful.
Yeah, I think some of their financial problems, and they're having, right, um, just, just a master base problem that they got, one end of the assignment program, and they're just trying to cut off one end, and they're in trouble.
I do, and I guess I appreciate the efforts that they had, that we did have a program for some amount of time, but a curbside program is, is a challenge, we do, we know they have.
It's all the public parts.
Those are being collected back up, I'm not convinced that they know where all of them are, you know. They don't know what mine is. I mean, I, I know what it is to run a solid waste collection, and it's, it's, it's not easy, gotta stay on top of it on a day-to-day, in our case, it's six days a week, so.
So Al can announce the official end of recycling stage, or is that reasonable?
At least the curbside, the residential. At, at least the curbside, the residential curbside program is, according to county, suspended as of September one. I would see just being talking with Mr. Causess to get Al to confirm that, but that was my last, how long, Mr. Causess?
So you want everybody you have on the remaining to set it out by the road so they can be marked and picked up?
I'll, uh, I'll, I'll look into that, see how we wanna.
Ever next area?
The Thomas County.
Everyone, Gary, you wanna talk to her?
If that might use some of our own trash, sure.
Or can we just?
Let's work pay for it.
Yeah, can we, can we go ahead and just, uh, start using as a second trash can, or do we use a second? I think that's part of the problem.
You're probably, that's probably.
Isn't that part of the problem already?
I don't, I don't have a.
I haven't sorted anything in a while.
No.
There's something in the regular trash.
Really?
Yeah. I haven't sorted. For a long.
But there's no, I mean, nobody's been, there's been no public education for eighteen months.
Allegedly, it's, it is, it is not reaching a final destination of to be used back into something.
Is that allegedly, or is, I think it's gotten so mixed that.
But, it was allegedly doing that about a year and a half ago, so.
So it didn't matter if you separated it out of your house when it got to the landfill, it was all the same thing anyway.
Sort of.
Just made you feel warmer and fuzzy, just walked it out, walked the trash can out twice.
Allegedly. I put the tone, we all know that, right? Oh, no, it's, it's, it's not.
Paint, weapons that don't work.
It, it's not every.
Old ammo, it all went in there.
Well, we'll, we'll look into that, work with county on that.
Did she make that joke, she knew about you passing during New York or not?
Wasn't every day of the fall.
That's why, okay, that's why, that's why you should front, y'all.
In all honesty, I appreciate it that we ran it for, for a few years with their assistance, they did, they did the collection part of it. They approached us on that, got some grants to put it into place, and, and it worked for a while. It seemed to be in the right direction, but, um, but we'll see where we go from here with it, and try to convince her we get all those collections proper, so we'll be with Mr. Causess, see what they, what help we can provide with that.
So the current.
We're not giving them any more money. Who's not writing that check?
Yeah, no, no, it wouldn't come to us. No, we haven't been given any.
Thanks for that.
And they're missing since they're not doing it anyway.
Yeah, they are, they're done with it.
I'm, I'm talking about KBB, I mean, they didn't do Great American Cleanup in, in April, they haven't done, trying, they, they're, they're getting rid of the water festival, which is, is an incredibly sad thing, it's broken, it's nine hundred and something kids, and every year come to that water festival, they're getting ready to shut that thing down. So, yeah, we're gonna give them, at least as far as this is concerned, we should be right, done with it.
That's all I had, man.
Okay.
The recycling centers inside the city limits that are currently receiving, the big centers, the one, there is no plan to have to be phased out, right? I, I know of.
Only that's part of the original agreement, once again.
And, and potentially a second.
Add a second one, what they're running.
Yeah, potentially a second one. So, we hope that they'll do that and operate it.
I'll stay.
Yeah, that's right, and then, uh, when was the one last time that was setting up that, that work session? Yeah, I'm, I'm, work session for the temporary visitors permit. So, try to set that over, and now that you've got the big set for the alcohol organs provisions. Do you have any idea for that when we put it off at the last meeting? Give it ninety-eight, and what's waiting?
I wish I did that in August, though.
First August.
Yeah.
First, first meeting, August.
Just make it after that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so, make it right up at the first meeting in August, August fourth. Alright, got that, Sue? Yeah, thanks for mentioning.
That it? Okay, do we have any public comments, Miss Sue? Okay, do I have a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters and potential litigation towards with OCGA thirty fifteen three? Second, any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
We take a two-minute break.
Two minutes?
Okay. Eric, I tell you where I found that.
Yeah.
Your nail, my nail.
Up to you.
I'm gonna get that made out here for a while. I was hoping that, believe me, I would cover it.
I don't give one, then.
I say, I mean, there's, we were talking, probably thoughts.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes, um, I was not here for the last vote on this. Uh, Mr. Al made note in the newspaper that I hadn't got up and left, I had to go to a funeral visitation, one of my friends had been killed. Um, so that's why I was not here to vote on that. Uh, one of my constituents called me and personally asked me if I would bring this back up and put it back on the, uh, agenda, and then me be here so that I could vote on it. So I called the mayor, asked her if she would put it back on the agenda so that we can vote on it, and, uh, here we are.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please state if I say aye.
Aye.
Who said aye?
That's what they had, what we had about this.
You voted aye last time. You voted ayes.
I, I, I'm voting for, for, for it to be, at least.
Yeah, that would be aye.
Okay, I'm, it's okay, yeah, yeah, okay.
All opposed?
I understand.
Okay. Motion here. Um, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So do.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.